Agenda. I don't hear any, I don't see any. Joey, do you have anything that's not on the agenda?
Nope, all good.
Okay, good. Brandon, comments on topics not on the agenda?
I do actually have one tonight. Everybody received this piece of paper and a paper. So this is from Steve Aikenhead.
Okay, where's it? Because I don't. Oh, all right, way over here. Okay, sorry.
And he said, greetings, please tell anyone who helped the Bill Brink music series get rolling, or anyone who helps keep Hoysington Field in great shape, that the setting is beautiful and the music terrific. And I thank all who have helped make these events possible. Feel free to express my enthusiasm on the town website. So I just wanted to, they said, copy select board. So here you go.
Okay. Are there any other? You're all set with comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, me?
No, Brandon.
Yeah.
That's it, okay. Are there any comments on citizens on topics that are not on the agenda? I don't know if anybody else is online. Is there anybody else online? So we'll know that now, or can you tell if there's anybody, Olivia or Brandon, or no?
It's Joe, and that's it.
Okay, good. And he can hear us, so the audio is working fine. Anybody else on comments that are not on the agenda? Okay, I have, I have one. I sent out an email this morning, and you didn't open yours, and the state of Vermont has issued guidance with concerns about COVID-19 and about different things. And I, since we're, their, their comments are that if you cannot maintain six feet, they're not making it mandatory, but please consider masking indoors particularly, if you cannot reach that six feet. Now, from what I'm seeing tonight, and I asked that everybody mask up tonight for that reason, because I'm tired of controversy, and I'm tired of looking at all the research and the data about who is on first, or second, or whatever, and doing. I just want to get through all this as everybody else does. And we're not going to ask anything about vaccines, we're just going to try to get along. Having said that, I'm, I'm going to respect whatever it is, and I know that I'm six feet apart, and I'm asking everybody to do that in the email. The second thing I did was to, it was either at the last meeting, or the previous one prior to that, that, that we had a comment from Nat Whitney about, about the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag, and asked us why we didn't do it, and the school does it. So this morning, I fired off an email to everybody, and I said, you know what, I think that's a really good idea. So I think we're going to do that. And so we're going to start our meetings now by doing that. We do have a flag over in the corner, so it's not on the agenda, but those are the two things that I am concerned about. So having said all that, I want to start a meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and... It's right, they don't, the flag is right there, but we do have one online, too. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a good day.
There's, there's also no hyphen between...
Thank you.
Between the words, under God. It is one nation under God, not one nation under God.
Let's look at the minutes of August 16th, 2021. There was a question about our executive session in an email that I got this morning, and said that the current minutes didn't really, he, he didn't think that they explained enough. But we do have a copy of Paul Tillman's minutes of, of that meeting. My comment to that before we start, so I'd like a motion to accept these minutes. To start with, when I asked Brandon for that executive session on the morning of, the Monday before the meeting, he said, well, how do you want to do it? Because if we, if we do it, we would jeopardize the regularly warned meeting. And I said, no, I don't want to do that, and I don't want it after. I felt it was a personnel issue that I needed to discuss with the board prior to the meeting. That's what I did. So under the VSA chapter that we warned it on that meeting in the morning, it clarifies what I could do and what I could not do. We didn't really need to send out any warnings under an emergency section of the statute. So that's what happened. Paul obviously took minutes of that, and there was no, there was no business taken. So there's no action.
And I can add that to the end, just say, no action.
No action.
I could add that on that.
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Of the executive session for, on eight, August 16th.
August 16th, yes, with any correction.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the emergency executive session meeting on August 16th, 2021. All those in favor say aye. Or is any, is there any discussion? As amended, right? There was no action taken?
Yeah, I've got no action.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now to the minutes of the regular meeting, which started at 6:30, August 16th.
So move. It's the regular meeting of August the 16th.
I know, but what was your motion?
Oh, just to accept the minutes.
To accept.
Yep.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the minute, the minutes of the regularly warned meeting for August 16th, 2021. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Before we start the regular, I see, I see Ray here in my corner, so I want to, I want to ask, because I saw his name here, and it made me concerned. And I asked Brandon, and he said, yes, he thought he was. We did have an accident at Highway, and, and my first question is, is Donnie okay? I mean, I know he had surgery on his arm. I don't want to get into particulars.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've talked to him, and he's, he's resting comfortably.
Yep, that's good. And that, that was, that was the concern right away, and I still have it. So, I mean, these guys put in an awful lot of time, and as you see these pictures of these roads coming up, they're doing a really good job. And, and sometimes they get put in a position where, where things happen. And, and that happened, and he did, he did have to go to the hospital, and we're concerned, and we're, we're going to take care of that.
Thank you for asking.
Yes. Now we move to Town Manager Report. Before I let you have it, Brandon, I'm sure it's going to involve Ray as well. I asked, because I saw such, because these roads are an extension of where I live, and I thought they were so nice, the job that they're doing. I asked Brandon to leave the office and go ride around with Ray, and look at the work that they're doing, and take some pictures, so they can present us to see how nice it looks. So having said all that, take, take it away on your report, and I'm sure you're going to involve Ray.
Yeah, so over the summer, the Highway Department has been working on several projects to improve drainage, eliminate erosion, and reduce the risks of washouts due to rain. And I'll kind of go through these pictures, and then I'm going to hand it over to Ray, see if he has anything to say about these. They've been doing a really good job, and we went on a, a ride through the town, which we usually do at least once a month. We've tried to do at least one a month. The picture on the left, that's South Mountain Road, so that's the project they're working on right now. And if you can see these areas where there's water going into the middle of the road, that's erosion. And to fix that, what they're doing is, they're doing ditches and culverts here. So you can see a culvert going across the road to divert the water. And on, on this side, you can see the ditches that they're making to prevent the water from flooding the road. Do you want to talk more about that, Ray?
Yeah, a lot of our places in town are like that picture on the left, where we've been working on this for over four years, using grant money, and then that rental excavator for the month. We're trying to get the water off the road as quickly as possible, and put it into a good rounded ditch, so it doesn't have that V shape. Because that's, that really, that's a lot of force, and it destroys your road really quick during a heavy rainstorm. Seems to be working pretty good. We've gotten quite a few miles of road done, Katy Perkins. This is Gulf, Gulf Road, Piper Road, not Olive Gulf, but right to the bottom of it. Last year, we did Katy Perkins Hill. We've done Skyline Drive, Bowen Hill, Downer Hill, some on Girdlock. So it's pretty.
So those three pictures, the same road, just in different?
No.
Okay.
You have, I believe that's South Mountain on the left, the Center Road is, is Gulf Road, we put a culvert above Browns.
Okay.
And then the next one, I can't really get a look at it, but I think that's also Gulf Road.
So the purpose was to show the board what erosion looks like in the picture on the left, and then to show what it, what the Highway Department's doing on the right to resolve that. Down here, after they get done, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, we're supposed to seed all undisturbed areas as soon as possible after the, after we dig it up. So we, I think it was four years ago, I found a used hydroseeder, and the board allowed me to buy it. It was $2,300, it was $2,600, I got it for $23. It's a $17,000 machine, and that thing has saved us a lot of time. Does a pretty good job seeding.
Real quick, Ray, I can hear you just barely, and I'm understa, and that's fine, I can, I understand, but, but I'm concerned about anybody that might be online that might not be able to. If you could just speak up a little bit, please.
So the, the hydroseeder is a paper mulch. You put it in 450 gallons of water, and you put in half a bag or 25 pounds of seed, a little fertilizer, and a little tackifier, which makes it sticky. And you just drive down the road, and you can spray it right out. We could do about 1,200 feet of ditch, standard size, width ditch, with one tank. And it costs about $150 per tank to make it. I, I find it works a lot better than hay. With hay, you get a lot, a lot of strange weeds sometimes, and water will run off and plug your culverts with hay. It's a lot more, a lot more labor when you're going someplace, picking up the hay, getting a chopper, chopping it up, and spreading it. This seems to work pretty good.
So this is South Mountain Road, this is the project they're working on right now. And again, you can see over here the narrow ditches, and the picture over to the right shows what it looks like once those ditches are dug properly for proper drainage. So that's another comparison there, to see it before and after picture, what that looks like.
Roads look wider, but the actual travel portion of the road is the same width. You just don't have the ditch in the travel portion of the road anymore. So you're actually adding 18 inches, so the road no longer has a big washout in it.
So this, this project on South Mountain Road that's being paid for with a grant through Grants and Aid, and that's a $29,000 grant to do that work. Another part of the report is to reveal to the board the grants the Highway Department received this year. So just for FY '22, the Highway Department was able to secure $576,000 in grants for projects this year in fiscal year '22. And this is above and beyond the Highway Department budget for this year. $357,000 of that came from the Highway Structures Program, $43,000 from Grants and Aid, and the remaining $175,000 is a Class II roadway project grant. So these, these grants include funding for engineering, repaving culverts, adding in new culverts, resurfacing roads, and crack sealing. Roads, this funding will cover includes a Scutney Basin Road, Kitty Hill Road, Golden Ridge, Green Valley, Lottery Lane, Old Boe, Wellwood Orchard, Perkins Hill, Skyline, South Mountain Road, Stoughton Pond, Center Road, Reservoir Road, and Airport Road. Did I miss any, or?
No.
Okay.
There is some engineering cost on some of these roads. It's just engineering, but not the building part.
Yeah.
It helps that we have things shovel-ready for the infrastructure, federal infrastructure thing, if it happens.
Absolutely. If you have the engineering done when you apply for a grant, then they consider that project shovel-ready, like Ray's saying, and it's more competitive for funding. Anybody have any questions about the Highway Report?
I do.
Yeah.
I'd like to recognize whoever wrote the grant request for all those. It's $576,000. Did that work?
Mr. Stapleton.
Thank you very much, Ray. Great job.
I have a question also.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Would resurfacing roads, would that cover repaving Tenny Hill Road? Is that something that we can do, ever?
I have a paving plan that I'm drafting, and that, that is one thing on the draft meeting. I don't want to, it's not public. I haven't formalized the draft yet. But that's a, that's not a Class II road, so no, these grants will not cover that. These only cover Class II roads as far as paving, which is Center Road, Airport Road, Reservoir, and Stoughton Pond.
So you can use it for paving now? That's great.
I can, I just can't use it. I have to use it on a Class II road.
Right. Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next part of the report is the Weathersfield Music Series. So to date, there's been nine performances each weekend, each Friday, from 6 to 8. July 9th was the first one, and there's still three more to go. So June and Bill Brink, the coordinators of this series, have extended an invitation to all select board members to attend one of the events.
So just, so Brandon and I are giggling, because Brandon, he calls me every Friday and invites me. And, and it just, I, I've always had something going on, so that's why I highlighted, we have three more, so.
Yep.
This is a great thing, and I'm, and I'm glad that we're using the field, and people are being able to enjoy it, too. So, a nice picture of your dog in here.
Hey, Colin Buddyo. So the next performances are scheduled between 6, 6 to 8. One night, or not the last event, but the Friday before that, June Brink was able to secure Domino's donating 20 pizzas to the event. So there was free pizza for everybody. The last event, she was able to secure a donation through Dunkin' Donuts, and everybody got free hot chocolate and free coffee. It was pretty cool. So if you want to attend, bring a folding chair, and they're pretty good performances. All right, next on the list is the Vorrec Grant. We submitted a grant application, or a letter of intent, to Vorrec, and we, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, Ludlow, and Chester to submit this grant. All of our projects are similar in a way, and if you do a regional project, you're more competitive, your application's more competitive. So this grant application that we submitted includes a bridge going across the stream right there, and it's a bridge replacement. There was a bridge there before, and if you, if you look really close, right here in this area, that's the pile of wood from the bridge that collapsed. Across the stream is where all of the beginner trails will be developed. So we need a bridge here, obviously, to get to the other side, and be able to open up those trails. The ATA's done a ton of work out there. I actually went biking there last night for a couple of hours, and they've, they've cleared a lot of trails and flagged a lot of trails back there. So it seems like they got started right after we signed that agreement. And it looks, it looks really good so far. So special thank you to Stan Spencer and the ATA.
Where exactly is that location, the picture?
This is in the town forest.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're accessing that from West Windsor?
From the state park in Windsor.
West Windsor?
Windsor.
I think it's, I think, I don't, okay.
Yeah, so...
Off of 44?
Yeah, you take a right out of here, and go straight down, and take a left onto...
44A.
Oh, I know. I just, I was always told that some, somebody that, they always identified it as West Windsor. I, okay.
That is, that's West Windsor?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. It says entering Windsor, so I don't, it doesn't have...
I don't know that. I'm just saying that I just, because of the location of the, the state forest, and I've been told that for a long time. So I was just curious to know where this picture was taken, and where, what your, because the, the words don't identify that. So that's okay.
So it's, it's in the state park. But we actually have an access point before the state park.
But this is on, the picture here is on Weathersfield property?
It is.
Okay.
Yep. So there's been a "Welcome to the Weathersfield Town Forest" sign erected on the state. So as soon as you, you have to go through the state park and bike or hike through. But once you cross over into Weathersfield and the, and those trails, it says "Welcome to Weathersfield" now.
You park your car, and then get your bike out of your car?
I biked from here.
Okay.
Just locked my nose, and took off. It's a nice ride on the way back, too. Everything's downhill. The sign came in today, I saw, for the Tenny Memorial. So this report isn't completely accurate. We didn't have the sign at the time of this report, but now we do. So they've installed the, they've installed the, the display sign on the Tenny Memorial Monument, and the project's basically complete at this time, with the exception of signage needs to be installed. Anybody have any questions? Great. Sorry if that report was too long today.
Thank you. No? We're going to talk about this room. So I don't know if anybody has, it came in that way, I don't think so. He probably came down the ramp. But, but if you notice, the floor over by the forest between her and I has, has lifted considerably. And so, yeah, so that's...
Just flipped, you just blew it apart?
That's like, a lot. So Brandon and I had conversations about, about what to do or what not to do, and I asked him to get in contact with VLCT, our insurer, to file an insurance claim. He did that, and I'll let him talk, speak to this now, because he had a meeting with the adjuster today.
So basically, our insurance is through the Vermont Leaks of Cities and Towns, and they hire a private adjusting firm to come, to come do that work. So today, we had the independent adjuster come over here, and he took pictures, assessed the damage, and now they take that report back to VLCT. VLCT reviews it and gives us the next steps within seven to 10 days. So at the, by the next meeting, I'll have an update on whether they're going to cover that, cover this damage, or not. I think there's a good chance they will, but we don't know until we know. So...
If, so here's what I'd like the board to consider. So if, and I think everybody's going to be in agreement with this, if VLCT, if the insurer, and I don't know if it's VLCT ensures themselves, or how we pay into that system, I'm not really sure. But if they do contact Brandon and say that they, my, my guess is, it's going to be like any other, it's like a car crash or something, where the insurers will say to you, as a, as an owner, please go get estimates about the repair. So I've already outlined what I thought a process ought to be for Brandon to do, which would mean to post up on our website, and to make a public announcement about all, any and all contractors that would be interested in taking, in setting up an appointment to come down here, and to give us an appraisal on what they would consider to be a repair. That, that's where it's headed anyway. Regardless of whether or not our insurance claim holds or not, we're going to address the problem. And the problem is water damage. It's on the wall over there, and it's on, over here, where it's seeping down underneath and getting into the floor. So it's either going, it's either going to be an insurance claim, and they're going to, they'll support us, or we're going to have a proposal to fix it at a cost to the town.
Is there a way to stop it?
Well, I think what's going to have to happen is, there's going to have to be some, the floor's going to have to be torn up, they're going to have to examine, and the walls down. So what we need to do is really think far ahead, because it's already September, whatever, it's going to be the 10th before we know it. And to get off the ground, this is going to be a winter project. I'm fearful of the inability to vote down here in March, because this is going to be tore apart. So we need to get on it, but we also need to grant enough time for contractors to be able to come in and say that they're interested in repairing. And then, I don't think we need to wait for the voters. This is, this is our problem. Our responsibility is to fix a building. And the only question will be, is, is it an insurance claim or not? But, but if we, if we get back, if VLCT notifies the Town Manager that they, that they want to go, that they'll say, okay, your claim is valid, then I'm asking the board to support his ability to immediately post up for some contractors of interest. If, and I'm not telling them to go get three, I'm just asking anybody who's interested to get an appointment, to come down here and assess the damage, and then we, and then now gather us the information in order to make a decision for us. Is that okay with the board?
You motion to that?
No. I just want to say that that's, that, I mean, it's, somebody's got to assess the total amount. I don't know what we're talking about. Somebody's got to make a cut in the floor to lift it, to see what's going on underneath this floor. Obviously...
It's got to come out.
Obviously, they don't need to cut very far, because I'm seeing a crack that's like four feet wide now. Then they're going to have to open the walls up to see what, what is going on with whatever water may be seeping in or something.
I think the concrete wall's sweating. It's a concrete wall on the other side, I care for it.
Yep. So that's up to the contractors to form a plan to how we're gonna...
Does...
Not let that happen. Go ahead.
Does, we have trustees of the building.
Yep.
Do they need to be involved?
I certainly would notify them, but I think this is a big job. This is, this is a lot more than a broken window. So I'm, I'm far okay with asking them for their participation.
My reason for going there is that I'd suggest getting the carpet off the tired wall. Because it's, it's, that's probably retaining water and turning them old, and that's what you're seeing. Even though it's not a bad thing, but it isn't going to go away.
But it can turn into, just for everybody's knowledge, we did have the air quality tested, and, and the air quality ironically said that the levels of all the bacteria that were tested were less in here than in fact were outdoor air, which is strange, but, but it's all okay. I've asked that these windows stay open, and that we're running the fan, they've run dehumidifiers. We're trying to mitigate whatever is going on, or whatever potentially could happen. Paul?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with, you know, letting them go do all that. But I definitely, I don't, I don't think you're just going to fix in here. I think you've got to look at some drainage out there. So I, I think you're, you might be looking at a couple of different kinds of contractors. I think the kind that would be in here aren't going to be the same as out there. So I'm just worried, we're going to make this look nicer, then it's just going to seep in again, whether we have carpet or not. So...
Deal with it, bro. Fix it all.
It's good that you brought that up, because if, if you get a chance, not, obviously not right now, but if you look around the outside of the building, the roof is broken right here, and I think it's architecturally done that way. So the full roof goes out to the parking lot on this end of the building, and it does it on this one. But it leaves these sections right here, which is where we're getting water on the walls.
Yeah, yeah.
We may have to extend the roof line on these two sections out to shed, away from the foundation. I don't know that, but just, water runs downhill, and where we're asking the, the drip edge is right here, next to the wall.
Yeah, I love that.
And even though there's crushed stone, just think ahead. That is coming right down here at the edge of the foundation.
This is bringing down, this is bringing down... This is bringing down, this is bringing down-
To the foundation.
Yeah.
The alternative is to have curtain drains, which is a lot of digging, I'm not sure we're into that.
If you can fix the water from getting in there first, that's, yeah.
I don't know.
I'm just saying, I'm all for whatever we need to do to fix it once and done.
Did you have a question?
Joey has his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
My question was how we're gonna stop the water from getting in there in the first place, but you, you've kinda touched on that, and Paul's right, I think you're gonna need more than one person, and you may even find that we're gonna have to hire somebody to tear this up to begin with to figure out what you even need to do.
Right, right.
So is that the first step, or are we gonna still get all these contractors, if we're gonna look at it from the outside and then say, we're gonna have to tear it up?
The, the very first step is that Brandon met today with the, uh, insurance adjuster from VLCT. He, was it a, was it a guy?
Yes.
Okay, he gave information to Brandon that he is going back to speak with somebody at VLCT about the process, about whether or not it's a claim or not. I, I really think it's really important to wait for that, because if it is, I mean, that, that really is an advantage to us. So, that's the first step. They said that they would get back to us in a week. That's fair enough, but it's, but the reason why I'm bringing this up right now is because we're not gonna have a meeting for, what is it, two weeks? So, if he got the information, then immediately we wanna post up to ask for contractors of interest to come in here and start evaluating. VLCT, the insurer's not gonna do the work. They're like any other adjuster. You bring, you ask them what, they, they need to identify what it was, and they work with the contractors for payments. Think of it as a car crash. Did you have another question, Livia?
Um, I was just gonna mention that the trustees have done a walkthrough and they really wanted it to get fixed.
Yes. So I'm happy to incorporate them in any meetings or whatever is going on, because they use this room, they've used it for a variety of functions, uh, in the past, I'm sure they, our obligation is to fix it, it's just a question of payment. I think it's gonna be more money than we think. Okay, I just, and if we, if we-
I just know that communication up front makes things go much smoother down the road.
If we, if we have to, uh, I don't know, we'd have to ask Steve Hyer how to do this, really. I don't know if we should be having a loan, I don't, I think this is gonna be big enough where we're not gonna wanna take and pay for it all at once. But, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
But we do have a rainy day account, just in case.
But I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be more than we think it is.
Yeah.
To tear this floor up and to put in the walls now.
Cross those bridges. Um, one of the, this thing in the floor, I don't know who put this down, but be paying attention, whoever you bring in, would be larger gaps around, when you do this type of floor, you have to have large gaps around, because this is expansion of this flooring, and it can't move against the walls. It gets there and then it works its way back out.
I'd also look at different materials too, I wouldn't use that.
Putting good material.
This isn't, this material isn't very good.
Correct.
But first, let's find out what the insurance-
Let's find out what that is, and then, and then Brandon, I'll, I'll, you know, ask him to send out email to notify the board of the stages of what it's going on, and to keep the board of trustees involved, that's, I'll, I'll find with me. If he, and if he hears sooner back, the sooner the better, so I don't know, I mean, they may come back in three days, which would be great, I don't know. Any other questions about this building?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, maybe it'd be a good idea to decide which route you wanna go with carpet on the wall, mat on the wall, what kind of flooring material you wanna use, so when the time comes, those are questions contractors are gonna ask, and it's gonna depend what the price is in the end.
As far as flooring, I would suggest this, we're dealing with a water issue, I would not use a wood product of any kind on the floor, use, use a composite. Water doesn't affect it.
I, I'd ask the trustees, but I, I just, I'm not an expert on any of this, so I'm willing to listen. But I think you're right, anybody's gonna ask, well, what do, are you gonna put the same thing up, is this just, what, what are we doing, taking it down and replacing it with new, or, you know, obviously, because this is, I think it's gonna depend on what we find on the walls, on the other side of that carpet, and then what we find on the floor underneath here. I don't know if it's cement, I, I don't know.
Is there an opinion on the wallpaper?
That part would probably come from the trustees, that's kinda what I was thinking. I mean, they're, they're the ones that care, what would they want to do? I would, that kinda thing I would leave for them.
Did you have a question, Howard?
I was just gonna say that, uh, from the insurance standpoint, insurance company will only pay for exactly what's here now. So if you decide to upgrade to something, you're gonna have to come up with a difference or something.
Yeah, they're gonna cut you a check for whatever, say the damages are, and that's it, on that, it's on you, yeah.
Okay, are we all okay with that? At least it's a, an update on information, and I'm sure if we get more, like I said, I'll, I'll make sure that Brandon shares it.
Another thing that would be considered by the insurance company is, has there ever been a claim for this type of damage? Because typically, if, if you have a claim, it's supposed to get rectified, and then you don't get another claim.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't ever remember anything like this here. Okay, let's move on to, uh, highway radios.
All right, um, so in your packet, you received a quote from CVC, it's the same quote that we had before, um, and then we also had a letter about establishing a network. Um, between the time that I sent out this packet and now, um, Chief Spalding from the Scottney Fire Department and Ray and I met, Darren called me last week, I think it was Friday, and he offered to use his, his repeater, oh, excuse me. He said that he will donate six to seven radios for the highway department to use, and the use of the fire ground repeater for all of us to use. So basically, what this would do is it would connect all the departments in town. I have a radio, the EMD currently has a radio, and AVFD has a radio, West Weathersfield has a radio, and what Darren's, uh, offering is to provide six to seven radios to the highway department and give them access to, to this network. We would need to purchase an additional six radios. Chief Spalding estimates four to five hundred dollars apiece for those additional radios, um, but there would be no annual reoccurring costs, um, by using this, this method. The alternative is, are the digital radios, um, the digital radios are still an option to consider. However, there's, seems a lot more expensive, but, um, it's, it's the preference of highway and the board, so, uh, does anybody have any questions?
When you look at the first sheet, so, the first page, okay, and it says, the last sentence says, "The total cost for both years combined is eleven thousand seventy dollars," okay? That's what that says?
Yes.
But then when you get to the, uh, second sheet, so, so is that installation, it, oh, God, now I've screwed it up, because I lost my sheet. Is that the installation, and, because the second page said, oh, no, we need antennas and studies and fees and everything else, and-
Well, the second page is a letter explaining if we wanted to establish our own network. The first attachment is just the digital radios, but the second attachment is a totally separate, a totally separate thing, um, and that was-
Attachment B is establish a network.
Yeah.
On Scottney, which is different than the digital radios from CVC, which was attachment A.
So it's a separate, did I read it wrong then, it's a separate proposal?
It is.
The first, you have low band radios, they're, obviously you can't buy parts, so we can't just go out and buy radios and join a network, because we don't have the network. So we either have to go to FCC and get our own radio channel, and get a tower, antenna on the tower up here, pay rent for that and everything, or you can sign in to this radio contract where they already have available radio. Third option now is the Scottney.
Okay, so, okay, so I read it wrong, so, the first proposal is, if you weren't, I don't have it up, because I screwed up the screen. I, the, the first one was leasing, right? We don't own the radios.
Correct. It's, it's, your, your payment is going towards like a cellphone, you're leasing a cellphone and you're getting a network with it.
So does, is there other costs that could come, because you notified them that a leased radio, for one reason or another, you smashed it, or it doesn't work?
If it's blatantly, if it's blatant, um, damaged, we'll have to pay a replacement cost.
I don't know, I mean, all these, the leases-
And the, and the batteries.
Yep.
If the batteries go, they're gonna one-year warranty, and after that, that's on us, everything else is covered, so if the radio antenna on the mountain fails, they take care of it.
Okay, good.
The network is all on them.
Good.
It's like your cellphone, you don't go fix the network.
And that's where I was confused on the two pieces of paper, because it wasn't clear enough for me to see that there were two proposals.
The second option, that's ours, we own it, we have to fix it.
Okay.
So if the radio antenna breaks on the mountain in the middle of winter, we're gonna pay somebody a hundred and sixty bucks an hour, climb up there and go fix it.
That, that's part of option B.
Correct.
Attachment B.
So we can't, CVC, it's similar, you know, I explained this to others, but CVC is the only provider that offers this type of radio service.
In our area.
In our area. So what we did was we also got a quote for what it would cost us to establish our own network, and then we got a price from AVF, so we have three quotes, but there are three different solutions to solve the same problem. And the third one wasn't in your packet, so that's it.
Okay, so here's my question for, for all of us to consider. At the very beginning of this whole conversation, I don't mind spending money on radios, but I don't like seeing other entities come in at a later date saying, well, I wish I'd have known, because that one would connect to this one. I'm all in for finding one that would get everybody on the same thing, and you just turn the channel, just, you know, I'm kinda stupid that way, if you have a, it, it, and I, I can't believe that there isn't one, where a radio device in the 21st century doesn't have the capability of connecting to four different entities. Not all at the same time, if you don't want to, you go off to a channel that you're on your own on, like Channel One or something, and then if you want to go on to a shared one with the other three, you go to channel, let's say, four, that allows all four to jump on. But, where I, where I have a little trouble is, is, you know, in another year or something like that, some, you know, one of the fire departments or the police or somebody, another entity in town will say, oh gee, our radios are outdated and we should've gotten on that system, and then you can't. That's, that's what I'm trying to get through in the thinking process, not having a separate system, but one that would be able to serve all.
Yep.
That's all.
Even if you didn't do them all right now.
Right.
I, I do like the idea of connecting all departments in town, especially during an emergency, um, you know, if we all had radios and access to the same, to the same network, which is what Darren's proposal is.
But on, 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 another question, what, what I would have on that one would be, um, do they work? Does it work? Because, you know, at the end of the day, you wanna know if it does work, so that means, you know, does it work? So, and, and another question would be, okay, good, or does that mean that we need to get digital ones for the fire departments? Because would that work with the highway, or would that work with the, with the police?
So the state police have already gone to digital? It's coming. So how we ended up with low band is we got the recycled radios from the fire department, so, um-
Now, or proposed?
The, before. The, the, the low band radios we have right now that don't work anymore are from the fire departments from twenty, thirty years ago.
Okay.
They got rid of low band, went to high band. Now we're just going to digital. So, I kinda skipped the high band thing, if we went to high band, that's your second proposal, that's your, that's what it's gonna cost, and the rent alone on the mountain is more than the rent for the radios for us. Um, as far as being able to talk to police, fire, and highway on the same channel, fire and police can't be on the same frequency, it's totally different frequencies, so it's a totally different radio, and that's set up by the federal government. So, those guys each have, you have a police radio and a fire radio in your truck. Now they have a police radio, a state police radio, and a fire radio. So I, I can see us using these, these radios from Darren, um, to be able to communicate during an emergency, but during an emergency, they need that radio frequency as well, so we might get, that's, I brought up to Brandon, that's my only fear, is we get kicked off in any kind of an emergency, because they need the fire ground.
And that was gonna be my question, is there gonna be a situation where somebody gets cut out?
A four-foot snowstorm. Um, if they're, if they have to go out, the power's out for three or four days, and they have to go out and check on people for oxygen and everything else, and they don't have, they developed this system to be able to talk in weird places in town. And if they have to use it, then we're done, we're, that's their frequency. And again, it doesn't happen very often, but when it does happen, it's usually in an emergency.
But, but you're, the, the fir-, the first proposal cannot at any time talk to fire?
You'd still be, they haven't developed that.
Right.
It's-
They haven't connected, they haven't linked them.
I don't know, but I'm just saying, the first one that would, on the thing here.
Right.
It's not going to.
Police, you'd have to have police and fire radios, like I'd have to have three radios in my truck.
From what he said, from what he said that were, it says the, like, state police are already digital?
Yes.
I would say that probably in the future, you're gonna see these digital systems come together the way you're talking, but right now, they haven't.
And that's, that's driven by the federal government on the, the radio networks, they, they require police and fire are totally separate.
But somewhere along the line, somebody's, whoop, I'm sorry.
No, if, if, if it was on the same comment, you can finish, I mean, what you were saying.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, along, along that same line, eventually, somebody's gonna recognize that all of these departments need to have one radio that switches the way you're saying, Dave, so that they can-
And digital might be the way that they can do that.
Instead of having three radios, which is what you said.
And I'm, I'm trying to get there too.
Yes.
Except, you know, the circumstances will do that this one, this one will say, well, that unit doesn't do it, the unit that we bought, let's say proposal number A. That's the jeopardy you're in.
I personally had looked at the rental originally, and again, I didn't know about Darren's proposal until today.
Yep.
But I looked at this rental, because I didn't wanna buy eighteen hundred dollar radios and get tied into a network that might not be able to evolve. If this comes up to, well, in five years, now we can talk to everybody if we have this special radio, then I can just re-sign a contract with that special radio.
And that is a positive for proposal number one, so it is a lease, and you can turn them, turn back all the stuff to them after two years, and if something else evolved, that, that is. Paul?
You guys have said everything that I was gonna say, and that was actually it, so, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the, uh, first proposal from CVC, um, for the radios for the contract of two years not to exceed the eleven thousand seventy dollars.
Second.
Eleven thousand seventy, he said.
Is, that, that's still up to date, right?
This is, this was in, um, I brought it to you guys in January.
Right, but is, is it still up to date?
We might have to contact them and find out again, but they also offered to do a one-year contract instead of a two, if that helps.
Did they put anything in there that says it's only valid for a certain number of days?
I don't see that.
But it must be.
I looked at it, I didn't see it.
Can't change it without that clause.
Okay, because then, that, that eleven thousand seventy dollars is for a two-year contract, the first year, it looks like it's six thousand thirty dollars, and the second year is five thousand forty dollars. And then we can, one, see how the radios work, which Ray's already tested, we know, and then we can also, we only have a two-year agreement, we're not stuck with something, and we're not, you know, we're renting.
I, I still, can I just, we have discussion, sorry.
Yep, yep.
I still would like to get with Darren and get those radios if we can, because then we still have the capability to talk to them at times, I mean, it, it would work with the second radio in the truck, if we had to go that route for now, I mean, if the radios he has available, that's a great, very nice of him to offer that.
If, if I may, with, with the discussions here, um, my other thing is, I don't, what, what I wanna have happen, or what I would expect to happen, may, maybe I'm wrong for saying this, I'm not a fire guy or, you know, the highway guy or whatever, but I wouldn't expect every person to be able to talk, back and forth, back and forth. Because I don't think you want everybody having a radio that can just be talking to Darren on there, or talking to West Weathersfield, or calling in, there, there needs, there's a hierarchy of how this stuff goes, there's a, there's a leadership of how this goes. You should have a radio, or whoever you send out, if you send somebody at the other side of town and you're going to this side, you've got somebody in charge over there. They should have the radio that, that Darren and you and, and Josh can talk with, not every, everybody in my-
They don't. Have you ever listened to a call? It's not that, it's not that complicated.
No.
You don't see, you don't, you don't-
I have listened to a call, and what, I have listened to a call, but what I'm getting at is the way you were, the way that you might have, the way I- And what, what, I have listened to a call, but what I'm getting at is the way you were, the way that you might've, the way I thought you were making it sound was that everybody has the ability to talk around here. I just wanted to make sure that, yes, maybe you are saying just one or two people, but-
They do, but the particular channel that I'm trying to talk about is a channel that would work for all the entities.
Right.
But, under, the, all the people that are underneath the, the commanders, don't just climb on and say that. They go on their own individual channels. So, let's say there was an emergency. You don't see 12 people trying to talk at one time.
Mm-hmm.
You see the chiefs, they'll talk back and forth to dispatch, and then, then they might shift to their channel to, to go down through the command or whatever they wanna do.
Right.
But you don't see a cluster, I've not heard one, on a particular channel.
I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen.
And that, that's why I included two terminals. If we had to, we could give a terminal out to someone.
There, there's been a motion made to award this contract, so is there any discussion?
Yes.
And it's, it was seconded.
Mine is specific to the, the motion. Um, in, in many contractual, um, agreements, are there can, there's a contingency that, that is factored in. Like, if you were gonna hire a construction company to do some work, you might figure in a 15% contingency on that. A 15% contingency on $11,070 would be $12,730.
Okay.
Should the board consider adding a 15% or, or approximate contingence? See, just in case there is some sort, or, or something else that needs to be added?
No, that makes-
Make it like 12.5 or something like that?
So, I, I can, I'll be glad to amend the motion to not to exceed $12,500 for the two years. Joey on?
Yeah, that's good with me.
You guys are just, I don't know where you think money's coming from here, but, but that doesn't, that, that's not in the bid. It's, the, we don't know that the date is held to the bid, so I'm confused. Now, there was an amendment made to spend even more money, and it was seconded. So, when we get to the vote, we're gonna show our cards. I think it's the wrong approach. The bid is what it is, it's dated on March something here, so we don't know the company's gonna hold to that number. And you're adding money already, needlessly, I think, on guessing and adding on a cost that was quoted on-
March 24th.
Yes. And I'm gonna remind the board about what Kelly had said earlier in an earlier meeting, um, where are you getting the money from? And it probably should've been taken up on the budgetary item, if it was that. I remember those two comments that she had made. Nevertheless, the, the motion has been amended to say 12, 12,000, what, $750?
12,500, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yes, Paul?
Uh, so, I, I just wanted to clarify that, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean we're spending 12,500. I, I see what you're saying, but that doesn't mean you're spending that, that means up to that. Um, if, if we wait and go back to these people and make sure that this is still valid, to Brandon's comment, who just made that, there wasn't a date on it, so Brandon stated that there was, there was a contractual thing, if there's not a date. Um, I guess we wait at least two more weeks, if not more, and we, you know, we've already kicked it down some. So, that being said, I also then asked a question, it was a valid question, where's the money coming from? So, where's the budget? Where's the budget for the, for the radios that you proposed?
The CBC radios?
Yep.
It, they'll have to hit the FY, either the fund balance from last year, um, or the regular highway budget.
I was planning on, so we haven't got a line on it this year, so I was planning on taking it out of repairs and supplies this year, and actually making a radio.
Okay.
I really don't want to add extra costs. I think we can do it what I have in my pot. So, money might not come from repairs and supplies next year, it might come from salt or somewhere else.
Right, but this year anyways, you, you feel you've got to cover what you need.
Uh, uh, can I make another point, real quick?
Yes.
Um, when we made the original motion for $11,070, that was also up to indicating that there's a potential that you might not spend that much money even there. So, it, it, again, it is just a content, a contingency, um, to try to, in my opinion, move this thing along.
Any other comments on the motion? Can you read back the motion, please, DeForest?
The first proposal from CBC for the radios for two-year contracts, not to exceed $12,500.
Is that what people's memory of, of the motion is?
Yep.
Any other discussion? I, I, for my comment will be, I'm not supporting this on the grounds that I don't like, that, that, I wanna identify where expenses are, and if a radio is a radio, it's a radio. It's not coming out of a repair line on the roads, for me. Now, the motion is a maiden seconded, not, uh, at a cost not to exceed $12,500 for proposal number, I'll call it proposal number one. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Three to two, it passes. It, you know, I, for bookkeeping purposes, this is gonna go down as a, as a not, you know, as a, as a non-expense or whatever, 'cause it's a purchase to this company for radios.
No, I think, I think what I'm gonna do is work with Steve to create a budget line with a budget of zero this year, um, and it'll be negative spent.
Yeah, that's right, it'll be a deficit spend.
It will.
For, because we're after July 1st.
Did you say that?
But it will.
It will be.
But it's like any other one, if you, if you, if you have something that's spent, we've had these before, it's not uncommon. We've been in the general fund too, and then for, for identifying for bookkeeping purposes, it'll show up as a, a million percent over-budgeted because it wasn't budgeted. Whatever the percentage is, it does get a little crazy, but-
And again, it's sort of ridiculous, I think, I think next year when we have the radio, like, you, they can make a line on it any time.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
There's no money here, but I, I believe when we go through the budget, I won't be adding $5,000 for radios, it'll be transferring to all purposes.
We, we've seen excessive, at, at the, at the, that's the kindest word I can come up with.
The last two years?
Three.
Three?
At least three years.
That extra.
Of, of surplus funds in highway and general fund.
That's not, that's not on the table for discussion, but I have lots of comments for that, to warn the board of this kind of move. Because I, Brandon and I have spoken about this, and with the new additions of, of highway and healthcare and other things, that's not gonna materialize. So, that's what I'm gonna say to the limit of that, right now.
Yep.
Let's move on to the compost, uh, the charging for food waste. Brandon, you wanna take this, or?
Yep.
Ray, or, I don't know, I, you're, both of you, or?
I'll go ahead with it, and Ray, if you have anything to add, um, go for it. Uh, so, just as a little bit of background, we didn't, I should've given this to you before, and I apologize for not doing it. Vermont is the first state in the nation to enact a law that makes composting mandatory for everyone. So, that effort was to reduce the size of our landfills and curb the production of methane gas. Um, Vermont declared that our residents are required to compost food scraps, which began on July 1st of 2020. So, on that date, we started offering compost, we contracted with, um, who do we con- Grow Compost?
Grow Compost, yeah.
We contracted with Grow Compost, and we went one year offering compost services free of charge, um, and we overspent by a little over $8,000. It was $8,112. And basically, how that breaks down is we have six compost barrels, 45 to 50 gallons each, um, and Grow Compost of Vermont picks them up weekly at a cost of $26 per barrel. So, on June 21st, the select board discussed charging for compost disposal, um, as recommended in the DSM environmental study that we did, um, on the transfer station. And the recommendation was to let the administration handle this. Um, I'd like to remind the board that the administration doesn't set fees, um, we administer policy. So, unless the select board acts to set a fee, I can say that we're gonna start charging for compost effective August, October 1st, but I can't set the fee on my own without a select board vote or some kind of action. So, I did notify the public that as of October 1st, we will be charging for compost, um, and I recommend that the fee be set to a dollar, um, a dollar per gallon. We did do a lot of community outreach on this topic. In the previous select board meeting, it was, um, recommended that we keep the punches the same at $3.50, so one punch for your compost. Um, but the community did not like that. Um, there's a lot of pushback in the community. They think it's unfair that if we, um, if they have to charge, you know, if they have to save up that much compost, um, some even said they would just throw it in the woods or throw it in the trash. So, we think that a green punch ticket for composting, um, should be created with 10 $1 punches. Now, there is the argument that, uh, Downers Four Corners will have to distribute another punch card. But they'll have the same, they'll receive the same amount of income. So, for every so many punch cards they sell, we'll give them 15 for free. So, for every 500 they sell, they get 15 for free. Or maybe we bump it up to 30, since they're only $1 punches. Others said that in the community, the first gallon should be free, um, but then people will just start bringing it in one-gallon increments, and will end up with the same negative $8,000 at the end of the year. So, I did explain that, uh, to the people that asked, and they understood, I think, after we explained that to them. So, it's really, it's up to the board. Do, do we wanna keep the punch ticket, one punch, 3.50 for compost? Or do we want to be flexible and offer $1 green punch cards?
Why don't we just make the punches $4 and still make compost free?
We could do that.
Anytime we raise or lower the, the ticket, it creates, it creates more controversy.
Yeah.
It also, it also, it also creates more crap on the side of the roads.
I, um, but, but if you listen to, I'd like, I'd be very curious to know, when you said that the public pushed back so hard, how many in the public actually called in on this? Three, four, five?
I've probably talked to at least two dozen people, some on Facebook, um, some on phones.
I really, I really trust that a lot. I, I wanna make this simple. We're already having trouble this last weekend with Downers ran out of tickets again.
Yeah.
Okay? So, um, I don't, on the other hand, I've also listened to the two guys that work at the transfer station, and people show up with plastic bags with garbage in it. That doesn't work, because they spend their days getting the garbage out of the plastic bags, which they can't do. They end up with all over their hands. It's like the worst case at all.
It's ridiculous.
Everything, yes.
It's totally ridiculous.
And so, making a new, separate ticket for, you know, you know, something like that, I don't think that's the answer. It, first of all, we don't have, we don't have a good relationship with the stores that are selling the, the tickets. You got one one day, then not the next day. I can't imagine that if we have a whole new series of tickets, that that's gonna, that's gonna go any smoother than already the tickets that we have.
The relationship between us and Downers has improved, and the addition of another punch ticket, it's not a big deal because they're already selling punch tickets. So, it's, it's the same, it's the same thing, you're getting-
And they just changed managers, so that was this little blip that just happened.
That's why they ran out of tickets.
I mean, it's-
I know, but it just, it just seems like, it just seems like not the plan the town ought to take, to rely on another entity where we've already had difficulty.
It's not the plan the legislature should've taken.
No, no, I'm not, I'm talking about our plan.
I understand.
Let's look at our ticket plan.
Okay, well, our, I'll tell you what my plan is, um, let the people deal with this, and then they can vote some other people into Montpelier to fix it, if they don't like it. 'Cause it stinks, and this is a mess for these guys over there.
But, so, what is the answer then? That we don't charge and we just swallow it?
I would charge for $3.50 per gallon, just like you said, you got, they're gonna have to bring it in, and, and they're gonna have to, if they have to store it up at home, good. Then they get to look at it there instead of the guys that, or, or we, why do we have to deal with it? Let the people deal with it. They put these people in Montpelier.
It's a container issue as well, okay? So, it's not that they can't bring, you know, they're not bringing a nice container where they got like a plastic bucket where you dump it in and it's all set. Then, it's the resident's job to wash out their own container.
Yep.
We, we have some coming with plastic. What, first of all, that kind of plastic bag isn't acceptable at the transfer station at all, has to go in the compactor.
So, the, the food scraps that go into the trash, one of the reasons why they're trying to get those food scraps out of there is so that we can use and sell the recycling in, in the trash, so there's not food all over it.
Well, it's going in a compactor.
Yep.
So, that's going in a, in a landfill, Olivia.
Joey has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Joe.
Brandon, how much money are we gonna lose by not charging for compost?
Eight.
If we didn't charge at all, what would we lose in a year's time?
So, the, an enterprise fund has the same amount of revenue as it has in expenses. So, it's not like the general fund, it's not like the highway fund where you can like, just balance it out. An $8,000 deficit, really, we'll have to figure that out in a year, is an $8,000 deficit. It's money that you're not charging for something, so it's like, it's an enterprise fund, it has to balance zero at the end of the year.
Are we, are we, Ray, is the company that's picking up garbage, uh, the, the, the food waste charging us?
Yes, they charge $26, well, they were charging $26 a tote, um, they just got sold out to another company, so I'm waiting to hear back.
Could go up.
The deal I got in June was, uh, I got them, we got them for $23 a tote.
Okay, so how many totes a week do you use?
Six.
Six totes a week, so you're running-
On average.
So, you're running 100 and-
150.
A week now, a bill. So, Joey, to answer your question, $150 a week times 50 weeks, you're still gonna run $7,500, $8,000 in the hole by not charging for, for food scraps?
And so, if you buried that into the dump sticker fee and not charged for it, I know you're Robin Peter to pay Paul to make that situation work, but I think you could avoid a conflict, and you could avoid food being in the trash, and you could avoid crap being on the side of the road.
So, the permit sticker would have to be increased, um, we've already done that this year and set the permit sticker. And also, the permit sticker pays for fixed expenses, punch cards pay for variable expenses, and compost is a variable expense.
Just so I understand, a little confused, he's asking if we could take, what's it, was it 50 bucks a year for that?
Yeah, like 55 or something like that.
He's asking for like another dollar?
Yep, or whatever.
Yeah, or it's just a compost fee, if you use compost, it costs you this much extra.
Well, it went out, so the, the stickers went out with the tax bills, so it's, I'm not sure we can re, we don't wanna reevaluate that because we'd have to have a whole list of bills to go out for $5 a parcel, or whatever, 10.
I'm, I'm just-
Then, then either way, you're gonna kick somebody off, so just set the fee, and let's get on with it.
I just gotta, what is the, what is the rationale for keeping a, I mean, it's 50 cents to dispose of, but we're gonna charge three extra dollars to perform that service? I just don't agree with that.
Well, it can't be 50 cents, 'cause you want a dollar. Paul, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we create a green card that's a dollar punch for 10 on it, and that will be able to be used for compost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Most of them made seconded to start a new green card for food wastes, uh, at a, at a price of a dollar a punch?
Dollar a gallon for, yeah.
Yeah, well, it'd be a punch card.
Yeah. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
This is what the town manager's recommending. Him and Paul both are more up to speed on this than any of us, and I would stand behind what they recommend.
Ray, what's your recommendation?
I, I put out three options, and, um, as a taxpayer, I don't wanna pay 3.50 for a gallon of compost. As, I, I, I think it's fair to charge what we, what it costs for us to get rid of the compost, I think it's fair. I, I just feel like it's, I feel like it's inappropriate to charge 3.50 for a gallon, it just seems like it hurts a bit a lot.
Paul? Um, just two quick things, uh, the other thing is, I also wanna make sure that I don't wanna cater to- I understand we sell at Downers, but I'm also not going to gear what I feel is right for the town and the residents based on what a store manager or the store says. I just want to understand they might own... We'll have to sell extra ones. We'll have to have that discussion if, you know...
It's not a heavy lift.
No, my point is that I'm not going to... I'm not going to sit here and make a town decision based on store management. But secondly, on that, it's just... You gotta... We gotta do something. We've got the $8,000 that's sitting there. Like Brandon said, it's not... Absorb's the wrong word. It's just not... You gotta... They gotta equal out at the end of the year. So...
Okay, Mike, my comment... Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My comment to your first comment, which is about not being held hostage by a store. The problem with that thinking is the Downers store has been a central figure in distributing these tickets for as long as I've been here, 45 years. And the notion, the convenience, that someone would have to come to the town office, which is 10 miles away from the transfer station to make that happen, is not gonna work. The notion that the two people that work at the transfer station, because years ago, they thought, well, I've seen all the postings and the comments about why don't we just sell tickets at the transfer station? These guys are busy enough doing that, what they're doing now. So number one, we can't take cash. That's not in our even remote possibility. Number two, you know, when you get... Somebody then would have to sell tickets like all day long over there. That's not working. So... But the reality is that for whatever reason anybody wants to have, that the store has been good to the town for a number of years, but the store's ownership has changed. And despite the promises of I'm just gonna do better and I'm gonna do that, there seems to be holes. And what we can't do is put all our eggs in one basket. So I know that before when we had this problem, we reached out to a couple of other stores. Has anything materialized with other entities?
It hasn't materialized, but, you know, we need to pick up where we left off and chat with the Scottney Market and others. And I know Bob Allen and Reading had talked about one of the stores over there that are possibly selling them. So I think let's spread it out and...
Yes, remember the compost... The function of the transfer station primarily is on Saturday and Sunday. The town office is not open, focus on those days. I don't know what the rest of you do, but I don't plan that far ahead in my life to make sure that I've got dump tokens. You go to the store, you buy them, and when there happens to be now an absence of whatever management, however, whatever the description you want to do there, is not working. So you have to find an entity that's open on Saturday and Sunday. Not gonna be the town office.
And we had some...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand on this stupid thing, but anyway. My question is, what is the... What would it look like if we compost ourself and then just sell the compost itself?
For the record, it's Bob Thomas, am I right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
DeForest, okay. I... Again, Bob, my gut, and I'm not gonna talk for Ray, but I'm stepping out of line, I'm gonna. Both the guys at the transfer station do an awful lot and I'm not thinking that they're equipped or there would need to be more cost in making some kind of bear-proof and other type of atmosphere, a cage facility or something that would house, you know, a significant amount of garbage. So that would be my first thought. Am I right? Am I far off the mic?
I have looked at it and there is... I mean, they're starting to push for that to happen. I also want a community outreach for people to be able to get their composting bins at their own house and they can make their own compost if they want, how to do it.
No, no, you're talking. I'm just gonna...
It's... It's another thing. We have light bulbs, we have TVs, we have glass, we have batteries. We have all this stuff that those guys keep getting added on to to do more and more and more and there's less and less time to add anything else.
David, if I may just...
Yes, real quick.
Ray and I have kind of already talked about, and he just touched on it. One of the things that we thought would be good to roll out with this process, I haven't talked to the board per se about it, but is to even have a little table there of some sort with, you know, how you compost. Like, a lot of people probably don't even know what they could do. Regional planning had some stuff where you could get some compost, like bins at cost. You know, I'm sure there's somebody we could find that is in the composting that, you know, is a representative that could be there like for the first weekend or something to help people understand what they need to do, how this is, why, you know, we're charging and so on. It's a state thing and that. So that might also help with some of that too and help people compost at home to...
Was it... Joey, was it you that said that, you know, whoever made the... Was it you that just commented that Brandon had made a proposal and that Paul had worked with them? Did you say those words or was it Kelly?
It was Joey.
No, it was me.
It was you, okay, good. I'm on board with that, okay? I want to make it for a year. I want to see where we're at. I'm okay with that. For the dollar, if you want to do that. But I'm also... But I would support it in regard to reaching out to those other stores to make the same deal as what we're given with Downers, whether it's the Route 106 market, whether it's up here to Rogers. I don't know. I think we need to branch out with the sales of that. And then I would also ask this. Because I've heard people bringing in garbage in plastic, that's not acceptable. They need to have some kind of an easier container so that our guys don't have to dig out garbage or plastic that we can't deal with, okay?
And that's outreach. That's creating the outreach. The table with Mary O'Brien being there. They have these composting bags that are compostable.
Okay.
And you can put them right in. We get them and we go buy our vegetables. You can put them right in that and that can be thrown away.
Okay, that'd be great.
A lot of this communication, it's only been out for a year.
Right. Yes.
That's where I was gonna go, is if you're gonna do this dollar thing, there needs to be similar to what we already have, which is a chart. It tells you what you can do with your $3.50 punch card. But for this particular instance, you know, you gotta have this, 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 or this. And it's per gallon. You just gotta put that thing there. And maybe we need a plaque over there that shows those things and it shows those prices and the amounts.
It should work very well.
Yes.
It'd be good up on the website.
If you're gonna go that route.
Maybe those stores can make money on selling compostable bags.
Maybe, that'd be great.
That's up to them. Yes, go ahead, Joe.
My last concern with this is if you charge $3.50 for compost, it's gonna remove any incentive for people to separate it from their trash and then our guys are gonna end up doing it.
Yeah, and I don't think that's gonna happen. There's a motion on the floor, Joe. I don't know whether you seconded it or not, was to make the...
Yes.
The dollar... To make a new card, a green card, that has a dollar punch for food waste disposal. So we haven't even talked about $3.50 for a long time. The motion says a dollar, that there's a new green card.
Should it be a green card?
I don't know. Somebody said green.
We already have a green card. See, green is recycling, is the first color.
I don't know. I saw that in the...
Blue, for all I care.
I saw that in the...
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? We've spent enough time on this. I'm okay. I'm gonna support this for a year and then... But I also want some more outreach with the... With other stores. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks.
I guess it's staying green.
Yeah, something. A vote to appoint Alexander Taft, is it? Did I read it right? As the interim land use administrator.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to appoint Alexander Taft as the interim land use administrator. I believe he works at the regional planning. Is that true, Brandon?
Yes, it is. And DeForest brought this to my attention. According to the law, we have to appoint somebody. And Alex hadn't been officially appointed by the select board. So the correct procedure is for the planning commission to nominate the select board to appoint.
And that was my next question. The planning board has done this. I see the Chair Howard here. Okay, so they've gone through this as a... As interim. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Yes.
Is contact information clearly posted and available for the public?
It is.
To reach Alex?
Yep.
Okay.
And we have DeForest in the office helping as well.
Thank you, DeForest.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. To appoint Bob Thomas as Lister.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Barbara Thomas as Lister to fill the unexpired term. And I don't know which one. We'll have to look that up. There's two.
Yep.
But in any event, it would be held until March. And if Barb chooses to run again, she'd have to take out the paperwork to do that and let the voters decide. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vote to appoint Nimrek for the Assessor Services. This will be for the Listers for one year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to appoint Nimrek for the Assessor Services for the Listers for one year. Is there any discussion? Brandon, did you get a quote on this? Is this in our minutes or...
Yes, it's $24,000. And I was... I did receive a question on whether we can take that, since we're starting the Assessor Services now, if we can reduce that cost. But since there's work that they're gonna have to do between July, August, and September, it's gonna... And that's up to $24,000 per year. They said they might not need to use all of that funding and bill all of those hours. It just really depends on how many permits come in and so forth.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? We do need to have them caught up and they're gonna get information to go backwards, I would assume. It might cost a little more in the beginning and then kind of even out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Land use update.
So since the last select board meeting, we revised the job advertisement and we've received 17 applications to date. So the last time we talked, we only had three. And we revised the job description and we received 17 applicants. So we're gonna close the job at the end of this week and then we're gonna convene the the land use administrator interview team, which is a member of zoning, a member of the planning commission, human resources, myself. And we're gonna hold interviews.
So let me ask you a question. The last time that you and I talked, it was 12.
It was.
And about this. I mean, we've talked since then, but... So now it's up to 17. So for the record, what happened at the end of the last meeting was we asked you to take out the dollar kind of per hour threshold and to put in, you know, commensurate on experience or some sort of language that obviously increased dramatically the number of applications. So when you just said you're gonna convene the team, quote unquote, to go through some things, what is your plan? To go through the applications and give, let's say, five or six to the planning board?
Yes, I think everybody that's on the interview team will receive all the applications by Friday. And then we'll take the weekend and a couple of days during next week to review the applications and determine who's gonna receive an interview. We'll hold the interviews and then we'll recommend all the candidates that we deem proper to the planning commission. So as long as they qualify for the position and they meet all of the expectations of the... So we're weeding out candidates so the planning commission has...
But are you gonna give them... I hope you're gonna give them more than what they think. So, you know, if 17 applied, my hope would be that they may even get to decide. I would leave it up to them to decide because that's their statutory obligation.
Yes.
So I didn't see a phrase in there saying that you go through a pre-screening process before the planning board gets it. And so my hope is that if somebody or maybe several people are on the fence, that you would turn it over to them and let them decide the fence.
So the planning commission will receive all of the resumes.
Okay, good.
So if the planning commission decides to interview somebody that we didn't, then they're welcome to do so.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Now I'm good. I wasn't good, now I'm good.
Well, that's why I was talking about fences because I knew you were... I could see your hair was turning a little gray over there from the smoke.
Gray?
Yeah.
It was falling out.
Well, I just didn't want to... I didn't want to get you onto another cloud. But I'm also intrigued by 17 applications and I think that's very good. Okay. Is the board happy with this update? So they're gonna be...
No.
Okay. I said the board, I didn't say an individual.
I'm a member of the board.
Well, yeah, but...
I was voted in.
Well, yeah, but... Now, go ahead, Mr. Todd. Obviously, you said no.
Well, there was a recommendation that came forward from the planning commission. Are we discussing that as well?
Refresh my memory.
The recommendation to combine an assessor position and a land use administrator position and make it a full-time position so that the town manager can advertise it that way and knows where he's going with it. And by the time we get to doing interviews and hiring somebody, they're gonna be asking that question too because the current ad is vague.
It is vague. I think, why don't we see what the candidates... What we have for candidates? Let's look through the resumes and see what everyone's request is. Would they take a part-time position? Would they... Or is a full-time position the only option? And then determine... Well, I guess it's kind of important to do.
Well, to answer your question, Brandon and I have had a chat about this and we need to fill the Listers, which we just did, at least in an interim for a year with Nimrek. If you contract with that entity, I'm not sure you automatically get out of that. There's a Lister who put her name in. I don't know how much or how little of the work, although you did see the description of what Nimrek is supposed to do or not do as far as what the town's obligation is to do. And the ad, which was posted for what it is, it wasn't full-time and it would then be a little misleading to the 17 people that just applied that... I'm not jumping to the leap saying that you thought it was full-time to the leap saying that you thought it was full-time, because they responded to the ad that wasn't. It was for 30 hours, right? The ad?
No hours were advertised.
Okay, so none, so I.
It, it doesn't say full-time or part-time.
Okay. So I don't know the answer to your question.
Me neither still.
Okay.
But that's okay, I, I, I.
Well, we didn't know.
Here's what I do know, is the town manager is, is running the show, and he know, he's, if he knows what he's doing and where he wants to go, I'm okay with that.
And in fairness to whatever, I don't think anybody at this table thought you're gonna see 17 applicants come forward, okay? I didn't, and it changed already by five from the last information that I had. In the beginning of the ad, when it did say, I don't know, I don't recall what it said, there was only like, there was only like two. So, um, whatever promoted their interest, there, there's applicants. So, on the other hand, uh, land use is, is a part of what we were talking about. The lister's absence is important, and there is a company without persons who sometimes is good to have a company contracted to do a certain amount of work. Get on with the work. So if, if they're hired, in other words, they're gonna be wanting some information to go ahead with some of their work now. So there's not gonna be a two, a week, or a month delay.
So I, can I make a?
Sure.
When we first advertised a land use position, it was advertised part-time, and we received three applications. We removed part-time slash full-time, we, we removed that. We removed to pay, and then we received 17 applications. There are some administrative services that Nimric is not going to provide that will be the responsibility of the town. However, we have a new lister that's gonna be starting tomorrow, and her and I still need to talk about what responsibilities will be delegated to her, um, which would require, which would require training, et cetera. So I think in the next meeting, we should talk about this one more time.
The only, the only thing I wanna add to this is that we have a couple of decent land use administrators under the part-time category, and we lost them because of that one. I don't know, I, with one, the last one, he definitely wasn't gonna be around for very long anyway. But I, I, I don't, I've done this so many times now, I'd like to be able to retain somebody, and I'd like the, the administration to be just focusing on that thought, that it would be good to have somebody and be able to retain them for more than a couple of years, or more than a year and a half or so, to do this job.
Well, maybe Nimric does that too.
Maybe.
I don't know.
That's my two cents.
I don't know what other, I don't know what other towns do. I don't wanna, I, I agree, I don't wanna plow all this ground, but I also don't wanna talk about individuals. I wanna focus on whatever the, the job is.
The job.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk about names.
I agree.
I say let this play out and let Brandon go for his team, and then he'll give us another update in another week, uh, two weeks. Okay, let's go on to ARPA.
I want some.
The, the, uh, I know that Brandon met with, uh, was it a girl that came down to talk about the distribution of these funds?
Yes, Katie.
Definitions.
Katie Buckley.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just get there. So we prepared this presentation for the board tonight, um, and I'm gonna go through it pretty fast. I don't wanna, we have a lot of time to talk about this. So we're just gonna, you know, we, we met with department heads, we started compiling, um, what will be eligible, what will not be eligible, and so forth. But let's, let's start with an overview. So everyone knows, the American Rescue Plan is a $1.9 trillion package that was signed into law, March 11th, 2021. And the purpose was to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. 350 billion went to states, local governments, and counties, um, and they're all subject to the requirements specified in the interim final rule. The final rule is expected to be released sometime at the end of 2021. The state of Vermont received, uh, a really, a, a good amount of money. 1 billion, 49 million, 287,000 dollars. And counties received 121 million, metro cities 20 million, uh, non-entitlement units of government 58 million, um, so that's, that's the total right here. Um, Weathersfield is receiving 781,000 dollars, and that's split up between the local side and the county side. The county side has been reallocated directly to Weathersfield. So the first payment of 136 was received in August, and the first payment of 253,000 is received in, this month in September. And then in 12 months, or within 12 months, the other half is distributed in a similar fashion. So the timeline, all funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. So that means we have a lot of time to discuss this and determine how to use the funds. And then all funds must be spent by December 31st, 2026. And anything that hasn't been spent by 2026 has to be sent back to treasury. So obviously, we wanna try to use it all. I'm gonna now turn it into, turn it over to eligible and ineligible uses. So eligible uses is pandemic response, premium pay to eligible workers, lost revenue, water, sewer, and broadband. Ineligible uses, this is very broad, um, ineligible uses are federal matches, pensions, infrastructure not directly associated with ARPA, um, and rainy day funds, financial reserves, and outstanding debt.
So the remaining. Let me ask you a quick question.
Yep.
Okay. How, when, let, go back a couple of slides. So Weathersfield is gonna get, by the end of this month, 389,000 dollars, right?
Yep.
Little bit more, 390,000. How do they make that calculation, this formula? So when Weathersfield gets a total, but, but I'm only talking about this year, cause next year's next year.
Yep.
Of 781,000 dollars, how did they get that, uh, and I'm sure they used it statewide, that formula? Did they say 2,700 people?
I tried to, or we tried to guess the formula, and basically what we came up with was by population.
Well, but the conference call that you and I were on one time, the, the, the last number that I heard was 98 dollars a person. They disclosed that to us.
Yeah, it was 90, 99 dollars per person for local, and then 199 per person for federal, I mean, for county.
200 dollars per person?
200 dollars in total per person. And that's kinda how I think they formed the calculation for every.
Who's gonna calculate it here? Can you do that for, Weathersfield has a population of 2,700 people. I'm not sure if that's.
Am I multiplying it by?
Children or not?
That's not the number they used.
Okay, what did they use?
They used 26, I can't remember, 26 something, 26, 22.
Okay. Oh, so you have that number?
Yep.
So, so, so it was 300 dollars per person?
Yes.
So you, you said to me, two, a minute ago, from the federal level, it was 199, and then the, the state level was 99. So it was 298 dollars?
Somewhere around there.
So who does, who has the calculator? 298 times, um, 26, 26, let's say, just for the heck of it, and see what we come up with.
782, 550.
Excellent, so we're right on the money. So we're right on the 781 thing. Okay, so I, you know, you're gonna see a, a proposal here about what people want, okay? In town, different entities. And I jokingly said to Brandon, he's already laughing because he knows what's coming, that this was allocated at about 300 dollars a person. I am absolutely certain that every resident in Weathersfield is able to disclose their hardship under COVID-19.
My bad.
So we're gonna see, though, entities that are gonna come forward with, no, wait a minute, give me a really lot of money, because like, I count more than you, that's what I feel. And if we wanna make headlines statewide and be bold, I'd say give the residents a 298 dollars, and we're gonna give them checks, cause that's the way they allocated the formula. Cause I'm gonna tell you what, I've had as much hardship as anybody else, whatever the entity, I'm not sure that that would make the requirement as, as far as spending on the COVID-19 money goes, but that's how they came up with the formula, they formulated it, the per person. I, I find that to be real interesting, that if you really wanted to give it to the people that hurt, you're giving it to the people that hurt, because that's the way they allocated their formula. But you're gonna read here on, a little bit more on our screens about, about, um, you know, maybe, because we're already, we're already gonna run into it here. So from what the conversation I had with Brandon was, for instance, when they said for reimbursement for, for, um, for COVID-19, for, let's say, hazard pay.
Yeah.
Apparently, the, the, the police departments in the state count, but, but, but the highway does not, and neither does like the fire departments.
Traffic station.
I'm not, yeah. I'm not sure how the, all that sorts out, because I view them to be equals in, in, in the line of whatever it is to access to people.
But the rulers above you see them as being.
But the rules, the rules don't go down that road. So, so that's why I was getting back to my thing about, well, then, we're gonna make a case where everybody in town was affected. I don't know the answer to here, but folks, I, when we, when we, when we go down through this list and we're gonna pick winners and losers, I, I, we're gonna open a can of worms that's gonna, it's gonna be really hard.
To some degree, we're not gonna pick winners and losers, there's, there's, um, I think there's an outline and plan that's given, and, and people are gonna have to follow under the categories they're gonna have to apply.
Well, no, 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 let's look at, let's take a couple of these up, Brandon, go through the whole thing then, before we ask him a question. Let him go through the, let him go through what already the entities in the town have been asking for.
All right, so, um, the LCT guidance was to, for this funding, um, this ARPA funding that we received for COVID-19 pandemic response, um, was to convene stakeholders and hold meetings with boards, committees, commissions, department heads, um, and so forth. And we've started that, but we haven't met with everybody yet, um, nor have we drilled very far into all of these requests. So I put a disclaimer right here. The remaining slides in this presentation.
Oh, this is a C Y A.
The remaining slides in this presentation contain information obtained through research and meetings with department heads in Weathersfield. Additional information is required before a full proposal will come before the select board from these departments. So we still need to really discuss this in more detail, um, but we've put together a very high-level, um, four high-level slides of the requests we've received to date. The first is, um, and it's, it's actually my proposal, um, is to, during COVID-19, we put together a small business grant opportunity, and what that allowed people to do in the community is apply for funding, um, for those businesses in town that were impacted by COVID-19. So I, my proposal is to ask the board to allocate 50,000 dollars to, um, small businesses in town. I'll put together a formal proposal, but that's just the first, um, from an economic development standpoint, the businesses in town, um, they need support and they need help. I think we can put together a really well-structured grant program. The other one that we created, it was created pretty quickly, we tried to get, we only had a month to spend the money, um, and we needed to, I think we had actually two months, so we had to turn it around really fast, and we did it right before Christmas. But I think we can spend time developing how we want to concentrate that funding, like, what are the priorities that we wanna see the money do for the, for these businesses? So that's the first request or proposal. The second, um, the highway department has four, four requests. The first was for the radios, and we did determine eligibility for those radios. I didn't wanna bring it up during, um, the conversation about the radios, because I knew we were gonna talk about it here. But, so the, the funding that we've, the, the money that we spend on the radios for the next two years can be paid for with ARPA funding, um, under section 1.8. So if you turn to attachment A in your packet under this report, you'll find expenditure categories, um.
They're not here, mine's blank.
Back, well, you'll have to keep scrolling.
I am, but I'm down to the orders.
Went too far.
Went too far, yeah.
Keep scrolling up.
It's got the blue lines.
Public health will be the.
You should have it. Did you find it?
He's in a hurry.
Here.
Oh.
Section 1.8. So section 1.8. Other COVID public health expenses, including communications, enforcement, isolation, and quarantine, um, I do believe that it will fit in this category. The second is water quality, storm water. This is eligible under section 5.6. So if you scroll down to section 5.6, you'll see, um, infrastructure, clean water, storm water. Um, and we're talking about Act 64 stuff here, ditching, culverts, et cetera. And we're concentrating on Bowen Hill and Golden Ridge roads for this funding.
There's no dollar number there?
This is just talking about.
This is very high-level at this point, we need to drill, yeah, I'm sorry.
The Bowen Hill and Golden Ridge are, they were supposed to be done in the first five years of this Act 64, we got like, three years left. So that's why I prioritize them, because of the slope and how close they are to water and stuff.
Uh, the next is, oh, sorry, Ray.
No.
Did you wanna add something?
I'm rambling.
Uh, the next is a building addition, this would be eligible under section 1.7. The north side of the building involving a shed roof approximately 20 by 60 and 20 by 30 will be enclosed for the storage of waste oil, tires, and combustibles. Um, this is estimated between 30 and 35,000. And then the next is the salt shed. This would be eligible under section 5.6, um, because it stores salt and, um, we're, we don't want it to reach into the water table. So is currently actually a grant out right now, a grant application out, or it's going out? I think we have to review it.
I got an email after I talked to you.
Okay.
Almost prepared, he's waiting for an update proposal.
Okay.
This is the one we were always told to apply for, for the next five years, I'm in year three right now.
So this could be funded this year, it might not, but it's just another thing that's eligible that we added to the list for the highway department. Does anybody have any questions about the highway department proposals? It's very high-level, we don't have all the details at this point, but. All right. Uh, Scutney Water District, Water District Stabilization Project. We currently have, and it's gotten a, a water district in town, which is a separate entity within the boundaries of Weathersfield, that serves approximately 300 people. Right now, um, 90 of those people do not have water meters. So we have, you know, over 100 people with meters and 90 people without meters, so we can't charge each customer appropriately. Some are, some get charged a flat rate and others get charged a metered rate. Additionally, we can't determine water usage for those 90 people. So they can be, it could be a leak that we can't see. And there's a two-inch main that needs to be replaced, um, and then there's a main line that runs under 13 houses. So if it ever breaks, we have to literally, we don't know why that happened. So the proposal is a 750,000 dollar project, um, to provide water meters and meter pits, service lines, replace a two-inch main, um, for 90 homes in, in the boundaries of Whatisfield and Scutney Water District. 25,000 would come from Scutney Water District reserves, um, 25 to 50,000, 100,000 from ARPA, and then we will write a grant, um, to the state of Vermont, because there is several other buckets of funding with their ARPA funds, and their concentration is water and sewer, broadband, um, infrastructure. So what we would be submitting, and the LCT recommends that you use your ARPA funds to leverage other funds, um, so this is exactly what that does. We would be using 150,000 dollar match to then secure another 600,000 dollars in, in state funding. So that's proposal number two. Proposal number three is the Weathersfield Proctor Library. That's a 75,000 dollar request, um, for a facility change to respond to the COVID-19 health emergency. The library board of trustees have been working with an architect, um, to reconfigure the building, um, to respond to the pandemic. I think the next, uh, the next ARPA discussion we have, they're the furthest along, actually, I would put Scutney Water District and, um, Library in the same category, which is a lot different than the highway, because we're talking about projects here. But they've already, they're, they've already started working with an architect. And the last request that I have is, uh, the Weathersfield Police Department. They, premium pay is an eligible use of ARPA funding, um, for public sector employees that were on the front line of the, uh, COVID-19 pandemic. So they are considered essential workers, and nobody else qualifies in Weathersfield, the highway department doesn't qualify, emergency management doesn't qualify, the fire departments don't qualify, because they're a separate 501(c)(3) entity. So the only, the only people in town that qualify for premium pay is the police department. However, other employees would qualify under administrative expenses, so, um, those are the requests that I have.
Was that 10,000 I saw? Was that 10,000 a person?
No, it's 10,000 in total. No, it's 10,000 in total for all the employees for like a number of hours. And I do have a proposal in my office, but I haven't, I haven't added it to the full. We're still trying to gather information from everybody.
Who's first? I don't know.
You.
Go ahead.
Just, just to back up on the highway one too, we had some engineering monies we requested too, just so we could leverage the infrastructure bill money if it does come through.
Yep.
Kind of designs, culverts and bridges and stuff.
And that's the, that's the unknown. So, you know, they are, there is an alleged infrastructure bill that's pending if they can ever get off their hands in Washington.
But it's still a good thing to have them engineered ready.
No, 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 I get that. But I'm just saying that by us like preemptively just allocating some of these funds and then another one comes up where the state will be tripping over each other to give out more grants. I mean, I, I have no idea where they're getting this money from. And I, I guess that's the limit of my comment. I don't know whether to jump off the diving board and say, okay, to go to that one and then you regret it later. Did you have a question, Paul?
Well, it was more of a comment. I just, going back to what you had mentioned about the residents, I mean, there's a whole in section two, negative economic impacts, 2.1 through, let's say, 2.7 is all for household assistance, food program, rent and mortgage, internet access, eviction prevention, unemployment benefits, job training for people who lost their jobs in town or whatever. And then what, what, Scotty, the fire departments are nonprofit organizations?
Yes, and that.
So there's a section right here that says aid to nonprofit organizations, 2.10.
Yep.
So.
So the reason I didn't mention that is because premium, we were talking about premium pay and we can't allocate premium pay, but we can allocate funding to them.
Well, yeah, they needed special, all their, their PPE stuff. I mean, there's even a section here for PPE, so. But to get back to what Dave was saying too, I'm, I'm curious about what happens when we have more people asking for more money than what we have to distribute than what.
I think the goal is to, to get all of the proposals in town until one, one proposal to the select board. So to meet with everybody, figure out all the requests in town and a dollar amount attached to them and then you guys discuss them all.
Are we also opening that up to individuals though? When you say this, is this just town? Because you already wanted some money for like town businesses.
Yep.
The town government stuff. Is any of this open to an individual person if they felt they needed some money for something?
See, I'm not 100% like the rent, mortgage and utility aid. Those might be state programs that they're setting up with their ARPA funding.
Oh, so, okay.
So I'm not sure if, I mean, it says that it's an eligible expense, so we could propose, I mean, I could propose to the select board, you guys.
I just wanted to make sure it was across the board of what was there that, I mean, I don't want to come back later and have all the residents or people or three and say, hey, listen, I didn't get a chance to do this, didn't know about it. That's all.
I think we could set up those programs. We could set up, we could set up a mortgage, rent and utility aid program in town. We could totally do that.
And the elderly care.
Yeah. We could set up an internet access program or a food program. All of those things.
Here's where my focus is going to be. This money is allocated to each individual, okay, collectively. So to pick out a project that somehow skews that away is not on my radar really. So to allocate like two or $3,000, let's say, to 10 or 90 people or something like that, that doesn't benefit the whole town. And this, this gift, and that's what it is, is a gift to the whole town. The library, on the other hand, serves the whole town. I'm not picking winners and losers, but, but when you, but when you look at it, so does Martin Hall, so does the highway, serves the whole town. So do the fire departments, the police, whatever, they serve the whole town. So, but then you splinter off saying, well, we're already talking about like maybe two roads. Well, then that, you could argue that that would be serving like the residents, like, like 50 would be getting an undue amount of money on their road and not my road. You're going to get into that fight. For years, for instance, we've always had the conversation about the water district here. Okay, there's 300 people, that's fine, but there's a lot more to the town than 300 people on a water system. So I don't know the answer, but my, my fear is, well, it's not a fear, it's, it's actually legitimate. Apparently we're going to learn more here by the year end because they have to raise the debt ceiling in Washington and then they're probably going to get off their hands by at least Christmas about the infrastructure bill. So there may be opportunity, for instance, for the water system to recover a lot of money on, on that kind of a thing, funding mechanism.
So the Weathersfield School is actually a customer of the Water District.
Yep.
So we need to make sure, I mean, just the Weathersfield School and, I mean, 300 people are 300 people.
But they have, but they have a meter, they're on, locked on the system, so they're using it right now. You're talking about what, your, your statement to me like 10 or 15 minutes ago was that this, it appears as though the system has 90 people that are not paying any bills. Well, but that's not, but that's, I don't view that as being, that was far before COVID happened. This needs to be focused on COVID relief because that's where it's targeted. That's, that's a system issue that needs to be fixed, obviously, because you can't have lots of a product. I'd love to have, you know, like 90 other people paying my, my grain bill.
Just to clarify, it's not that they're not paying, it's they're paying a flat fee versus a metered fee.
And that, so, so when, I guess when I heard what he said.
Like a 40-year-old two inch main.
No, no, but what Dave was saying is, I just.
No, no, but you, you're the one who told me and I listened to the, a certain number that we're not.
That's only like a third of the project though. We have a two inch main that keeps breaking and then we have a main under a hose and I don't know, we have, we have big issues with the Water District.
But you're describing more than what was presented. But when you're talking about, I don't, I didn't see anything on there saying about, you know, what you just said, which is a two inch line ready to break. I don't want to, I don't want to get into speculation. Do you have a question?
I have a couple of points. One to the Water District thing that you were talking about, there's more than 90 people on the Water District and they voted to be, to organize that Water District. And if there's something part of the infrastructure that needs to be fixed and those people, all of those people that are part of that Water District benefit from that repair because they'll be taxed for it, just them. The rest of the town doesn't get taxed if there's a problem within that Water District. Only those people that are in that Water District get taxed to do those repairs. So that would encompass, and another point you made was something about a couple of roads, same thing. Any, any infrastructure that goes into a road, we all pay for it that's in our taxes. So.
Well, but, but, well, when you're, when you're raising like the water system to the town, it's like apples and oranges, okay? The town doesn't technically have anything to do with the water system that's all, that's separate by itself in a fire district and has 300 people that, that form their own group, their own, whatever, its business model. It's not technically the town of Weathersfield. So, so, I mean, if we really wanted to be fair about it, each one of those 300 people got a certain amount of ARPA funds that were allocated towards them. Block off that amount of money and say, here you go.
I understand where you're coming from. I, I understand your.
I don't know. It's just, it's just a thought process.
Paul? Just, just as, maybe you didn't or others didn't know, but Brandon said the school, but it's also the library is on the water system here. I'm not advocating for one or the other, I'm just saying the school is, the building is, that this, so just FYI.
It feeds it. I didn't, I didn't say it did.
And we took the $300 per person and multiplied it by 300 people roughly in the district and it equals 90,000. But also the district has made a big effort in the last annual meeting to expand the boundaries to encompass another 400 or, or 300 or 400 people. So the, the object is to expand the boundaries of the Water District once stabilized and provide water for more people in Weathersfield. But we can't do that until the district is stabilized. A two inch main needs to be replaced and it's a small percentage of the grant request. I gotta say that this funding request from the Water District is authorized and it's an eligible expense through, through ARPA. And ARPA, the higher level goals of ARPA was water, wastewater, sewer, broadband, and this directly, this directly funds a water related project.
I think we got a noise before we vote.
Yeah, we're not, we're not close to that. Any other questions about this? It's 8:30, Ray, did you have any?
One comment. It's not, the two roads weren't arbitrary, those are the highest priority roads according to the state's Act 64 standards. I'm not like just picking.
No, I don't. But I, but I, but I do know that this is, this is, it's just complicated and I, I mean, I don't know, I'd, with more.
I like your, I like your thinking though. Send every resident, say you've got 230 something dollars, what do you want to do with it? Do you want it? Do you want to give it to the police? Do you want to give it here? What do you want to do?
You're going to hear stories that are going to come out that are going to say, wait a minute, I was too. If you say, from your mortgage to you paid interest, you got a late bill, you couldn't go to work, I don't know what, I don't know.
No, I know.
Any other comments on ARPA funding for tonight? Let's go on.
Yes.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring back up that we talked about hooking the hydrant here in Scotty at the church to town water, potentially keep that reservoir full.
Yep.
And I think that would be worthwhile to spend what little money it would take to do.
Yep, I agree.
And if I may, if I may, Joey, on that note, I did bring that up to the Water District at our, our last meeting and I think we're going to talk about it more. Hopefully we're going to, we'll invite Darren so that he could talk about, as I said, I don't know how many gallons that tank holds or this and that, but to talk with him more about that, so.
Joe, I was wondering when you were going to comment about the water system since you had such a good experience.
I had a great experience with the water system. I, I really hope that we can pay for everyone's new meters because I'll be holding my hand out for the money that I paid to get mine here for it. Just to throw that out there.
I was just, you know, I, I was thinking you might have drifted away when you started hearing comments, I, I didn't know.
I was muted and my tongue hurts.
You were being nice. That's a, that's a Jarvis trait to be nice. Let's go to future agenda items. Anything, anybody, please, Paul, you get your arm coming out of your socket, go ahead.
Well, we discussed Kendrick's Corners once and we were indicated not to, you know, that we don't vote the first night and then we haven't seen it back on the agenda, so I'd like to propose that Kendrick's Corners back on the agenda.
Or paving. You want to pave this year?
I want to talk about it.
Okay.
Do we have any final numbers from our year end from last year?
We do.
Two.
Two, uh.
That's the number.
Two.
That we have left.
Oh, no, yes, we have year end numbers. I was confused why he said two.
Yeah, me too.
Two, one. Are you like, are you like Noah's Ark over here or something?
That's a number. Do we have any numbers? Two.
To answer your question, Kelly, we have what we've done in-house and then they get audited.
We haven't, that hasn't done.
The audit takes place in November, we'll get the results in early December.
That, that's the audit, but, but I know we haven't had somebody in the finance department for a while, but you must have some year end by June 30th of 2021.
I do.
So proposed, whatever there is.
Would you like to know now? I can.
Nope.
I'm seated.
Nope. So we're getting, we're, we're getting far into the year, I mean, to be talking about other things that are going to happen. But there is the general fund, the solid waste and the highway from year end, 6:30, 21.
And, and we had a discussion last year about getting going on budget discussions early. We're in September, we got one more meeting in September.
We just discussed it, so we're on track.
Well, healthcare, I mean, any of those types of things that roll into that whole discussion, we don't want to, particularly healthcare, wait until the last minute is what I, like we did last year. If there, I'm not proposing anything, I just want to get that out of the way.
I would, with the healthcare, I'm curious too, when, when we do get on that discussion, I, I'm just curious on what, how people like the insurances that they have right this minute, like how is, the plan's been working this year?
Can we do a survey?
Well, it's, it's a board decision. I just, I just met, so we have something to go with, you know, when, when we sit down and look at stuff, did, you know, because I know there was some concern when we went from one insurance plan to, to this one. So, which most of us here thought might be better, but I'm just curious. You know, they're the ones that are using it, so I want to make sure that.
We can do a survey without a board vote.
That's up to you guys. I just, I just brought it up because I was curious about it.
Anything else? I'm sure something's going to come up with land use or, I don't know, we'll see the, Brandon will update or whatever, we can transfer that information to the planning board. That's where it goes to the next step. It probably doesn't have to come here, it goes to the planning board because that's the process.
And then to the select board for the.
After that, but after the planning board. After. Approve the warrants.
Make a motion to approve the warrants, September 7th, 2021. General fund payroll, $20,855.79. Operating expense, $50,689.41. Highway fund, $14,147.2. Operating, $30,554.94. Solid waste management payroll, $2,326.79. Operating, $15,108.64. Library payroll, $2,977.50. Operating expense, zero. Equipment grant, operating expense, $2,388.60. Grand total payroll, $40,307.10. Operating expense, $98,741.60.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the warrants dated September 7th, 2021. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business? Did the, I know that Dave Beers started down at the highway garage and had a little chat with him. Is the second person hired yet, Brandon or Ray? Has that come out about or not really?
Yeah, he was, um, he was going to start today. He called, he called to let me know that his wife was exposed to COVID and he didn't dare come in to get tested, which I definitely respect.
Yep, want that to happen.
His wife is a nurse.
Okay. But so the, so the two, so nothing has changed, so that's good. So before I remember that you had somebody hired and then they, their employer said, now I'm going to. Yeah, exactly. Anybody else have any comments? Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Joe, go ahead.
Ray, you should work on getting them their CDLs so they can blow snow before winter.
Yep, we are.
Any other? Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.